Monday, October 10th. I would like to make a meeting to order. A roll call, myself, Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Rachel, can you make a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting on June 8th, 2020?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from June 8th, 2020.
Thank you. My second. All in favor, I heard you're gonna.
For the chair.
Thank you. Motion passes. Anyone for public participation?
Zero.
Zero. Zero for public participation. Public participation is closed. We're in queue through correspondence.
First course was first one is to wait for the storm. Transfer station is open to the public at no charge for the next week or so. For vegetation only, and the office is normal operation. Second is proposal from GSI for local stabilization and january. Several hundreds of thousands of dollars because we're looking to prevent the roadway failure out there. And it's good information because we'll put in next year's capital improvement budget for consideration. I don't see a thank you letter from John Wells, not even Tom Manager, to date construction. They donated and are continuing to donate all chosen barriers where the restaurants be open for outside dining. So they is donating them highways and stuff even at no charge. And there is some these four locations out there. The last one made ratios in the last week or so. Next, we have letters to the impacted residents in Sunset Avenue and Water Tunnel for the drainage project. We have received the immo levels permit and we are looking to get the final prices from the contractor to validate costs among the residents. We stay agreed to that and remember everyone will see it will be brought up at the town attorney. We will be buying materials for the project and the contractor will be installing it. And it's not a town project, and the town will not be responsible for maintenance afterwards. Item B is the memo. We probably the studies that we have these two little things, we did a traffic study of them. And information went forward to the police commission. Next in the item is my suggestion in regard to the town hall interior decoration theme. You've got three empty cases down below on the first floor. And this is another to my, in my opinion, there are some logical themes of how we can decorate town hall or the themes going forward for council consideration, however you want to handle it. And last but not least is a memo dated 7/23 from a cabinet out to John Wells and Tom Manager regards to the parking lot light bill. Under an old standing agreement, the seventies, the town water tunnel was paid for parking lot build, the parking lot project was called Housing Authority. That was never extended when the housing authority built the other complexes. And it was not a consideration or discussion according to attorney advocacy last year when they revoked the agreement for the town to do the pavement and sidewalks. It has been a consideration we negotiated. Do we still keep being parking lot build with the empty project or not? So this is item for the town we consider. And so our correspondence in your package, the motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the correspondence package.
I second that.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Any questions regarding the correspondence?
So the CLMP, or whatever it's spelled, is gonna go to council?
If the, yeah, the town manager, you have to put on the agenda for consideration. I would imagine it has to be negotiated, the housing authority similar to the agreement.
Is this the same bill ever, pretty much?
Pretty much, yeah. More or less is out. It's not majorizing, it's out. It's key to figure out what we're doing right now. Review Engineering Division, nothing new, steelwork improvement, what the new, one of these days we have to decide what we're gonna do about the study, probably nothing. For those who are new to the council, steelwork has been flooding for many, many years down by Marshalls and Nine Street Plaza. We commissioned a lot of studies over the years. The intent of WMC was to have one big wrap-up to decide what we're gonna do. Going forward, it's a multi-million dollar project depending on what the town wants to do depending on level of protection there. If DEP participates, they will only participate at a hundred-year storm flood protection level, which is very, very expensive. If the government corps of engineering does the study, they do the improvements there, they will provide potentially lesser level protection and lesser costs. However, they've informed us that they won't even think about evaluating it for 10 years. So that project is pretty much on hold. sidewalk, there's nothing new right there. The Pinnacle Hill construction is gonna begin Monday. I mean, project up by the bank on Woodruff Avenue, not by the bank, the post office. And anticipate being out there by the month. We've asked them to take a look at the intersection of Porter and Echo Lake Road as requested by the police commission. And they're gonna be doing some minor improvements over there if we come to understanding on the price there, which I don't think will be all that much. New subdivision development, Edford Woods off of Georgetown is starting construction. That's underway. We'll give a call to the neighbors. We're gonna be doing some inspection out there for the public improvements. And move road, which has been the subject of a lot of council activity over the last couple of years, protecting the residents. The developer or the developers contractor out there is in the process of trying to finalize that. Final course of payment is in, few points list items. And then we'll be coming to the planning and zoning commission where eventually refer to the town council for acceptance into the roadway system. Being they have their grant mitigation program, there's nothing in the pipeline right now. Rujek and Warranco, nothing new. Lots of, it's pretty much status quo. We originally thought that Gurgitown arrest was gonna be approved by the DOT this year for going up the bid. However, the DOT has told me they haven't finalized the right-of-way agreement with the DEP for their property opposite West Road. So at this point, I'm not real optimistic it's gonna be going up the bid or approved anytime soon. Could be the fall, which means that we will be doing actual construction until the spring. Main Street Construction and Safety Project. We are submitting a state grant application for the RRFPs in signalization of Woodruff Avenue and sidewalk, the Woodruff and Starbucks down there. We'll talk more about that later. But there is a follow-up meeting for the roadway safety audit committee on the 18th. 18? Yes, at 10:00 AM in this office, Tom Manager office, public is invited to participate. And the intent is to formally receive the first phase study from Warner's Borough, listen to their concept for the next step and discuss potential next step forward in the roadway safety audit in Main Street and potential approvals. Part of project, nothing new, state grant that just covered it. Ash Street removal program has been kind of superseded by last week's event, Hurricane. Hurley Engineering and Highway are evaluating all of the three roads in town with typically potentially be paying to the trees that came down or damaged in recent storm or taken out by either the electrical contractor or a highway. So we're gonna have a better handle hopefully next month on what the impact is. Heavyweight pond removal, they are, maybe DEP is closing out the original PSA. They're going to be issuing a new PSA professional search agreement to the town to cover monitoring costs for the next year and additional signage. Based on an email I got from last week. I'm hopeful that next month we'll be able to present that for the town council for review and consideration. Edgewood Avenue, water top slope stability, that we evaluated that. The slope isn't moving anymore, but we do have our proposal for soil nail stabilization, which we think is gonna be the most cost-effective method of stabilizing the slope there for consideration, making the capital budget. And we also want to talk to the police commission, local traffic authority at that time, about the possibility of making Engineering Avenue off of Main Street a roadway street coming down only. The reason it's coming down only is because there is a longstanding issue with the car wash and the volume of the road traffic coming out and causing icing problems. And also the fact of the matter is fire trucks can't get up into Woodruff Avenue anyway. So the local traffic authority can make a decision on what they want to do there. Still, we're greenwaying, nothing new going on there. We have an early meeting about the transfer improvement grant. Notably, Brooklyn Greenway is still under design. Norada Valley Council Governments wants to submit a state grant, no, excuse me, lots of grant to construct the almost two miles of trail under their lot of fence. That's a hundred percent funding for the state of Connecticut if we do get it. Staffing, all positions in the field, EPW is working with Burden to install bus shelter probably in front of the old blockbusters there. That was kind of put out of whole kit in the recent events. And the heavyweight building project. All of the town offices are in their new offices. Water manager reports that they're probably gonna be moving on toward the end of August. But they're not real optimistic about that because of what's happening with the school schedule. And I've been requested by the town manager to take over project preparation for the project in lieu of the current workers going on there on a full-time basis. And I've been directed to provide a full report of the project status to the town council to next meeting, which will encompass outstanding issues in the building, occupancy, schedule, and a financial snapshot as best we know it at this time.
So is Gary Martin-Barnett completing?
He's available on a per day basis to come back.
Okay, he is on during July, early December. Transfer station's good? Your employer?
Transfer station, we made an offer to an individual who accepted the offer. We passed the background check, criminal background check, not all checked, and they'll be beginning September 3rd.
Who's up there now? Who's up there now, with all his craziness?
While the transfer station technically is performing its regular duties, one of the engineering tech ones is up there doing the vegetation. Because that's every five days a week. Maybe we have a highway guy out there assisting with the loading of the road off and pushing up. We got a lot of people coming in on Saturday, a lot of residents. And Thursday and Friday, we had a lot of contractors coming in to clean the up yards and stuff. So I feel like we came into the yard any more, trying to figure out here. It worked out a little bit well because we already had a grinder, a big ton grinder coming in to take care of the pile. He's just got more work in his house, so he hasn't come in yet.
And then, what is this on my, how am I, how am I found out on the whole? It's Stony Brook. What is that?
Stony Brook, okay, the, it's part of.
I think I have it right here too.
Yeah, but I'm thinking of all at the same time. It's part of the heavyweight project, renovation project. There was two former basketball courts down there, which we've taken out as part of the project converted to a parking lot. What I did is I went to DEP as part of the heavyweight pond removal. And I said, which was not, it wasn't true. We use that for, we use the former parking lot area for staging and stockpile area for materials, and they're lost. So I told the DEP, I thought that the renovation of the basketball court should be considered at the annual removal cost. And they said, okay. So they issued us a change order to pay for that. They're going to have equivalent amount, which coincidentally was the exact same amount as the cost to put in the new basketball court down the strip, including lights and traffic and all that. So the DEP approved the change order mostly because the pond removal came in under budget. So they felt that we built them, they sent us a check. And we deposited a check in the amount of a hundred and some odd thousand dollars for that. But because it wasn't competitively bid at the time, and because Burlington owned this project and owned that site, what we did is we talked with Burlington, we talked with SBA, who agreed to waive the markup because it was a basketball court for the kids. But that was before things went south financially. So we cut a purchase order to Burlington for the basketball court installation over there. And in good faith, Stony Brook went over there and did all the work, and that was a few months ago. Now Burlington isn't paying Stony Brook until they get paid. And it's all being held up as part of the litigation. So in the interest of getting Stony Brook paid and also for other construction, only rumor of water tunnel businesses. What I'm requesting is that we cancel the purchase order, which is in excess of a hundred thousand dollars to Stony Brook. And we issue a new, no, to Burlington, and issue a new one to Stony Brook directly for that work. And, but to do that, we need a bid waiver from the town council because they're not competitive way of it.
Okay, so that will go on for the next meeting?
That's what I have on the next meeting. Now, the important thing to remember is number one, the work was only done. And number two, we've already received the money from the DEP deposit, and we're going to fund it out of here. So we really issue the contract compliance and getting the bid waiver.
Okay, and that won't affect anything that we have going on with Burlington?
No.
With the contract that that's all?
No, I ran this through the town attorney, and he agreed that this is the cleanest way to do it. Burlington said they didn't have a problem, they didn't have skin in the game anyway because they have no markup on it. And there was never a fact that they change order issue through the public building commission for the work. So that's clean. So this is the cleanest way to make it.
And we already have the money from?
Yes.
The other project to pay now?
Because heavyweight wanted, the DEP manager at heavyweight wanted to close out that PSA because it was at its funds, he wants to spread it elsewhere, but he can't, well, it's occupied us. So he asked us to build that work ahead of time, which he did. And he authorized it, proved it, that's how we are paid.
All right, so that'll get take care of the next town council meeting?
Yeah, the town council, yes.
All right, thank you.
Next meeting is Engineering Division, project status. No, nothing new there. They're busy. They got a lot of design work for the public works project. Also, general projects. Highway Division, all equipment's operational except for the backhaul, the blue bear sweeper. Backhaul, you know, what we have to do in our orders to improve the budget. Blue bear, we're done sweeping it down, we just gotta fix it for next year. Personal status, all authorized to issue the film and work status. Right now, for last week, they're doing cleanup, the project even cleanup for a while. And then we're gonna go back to getting payment ready for getting roads ready, the payment program. They're doing the drainage and all the prep work for knowing the payment contract going and doing. We did hit a snag over at Georgetown, and I've been told the same stat is hurting our Bassett Road. We can't get catch basin parts, the double catch basin tops. There's six or eight required over Georgetown, and there's six or eight weekly time on those. So that hurts Bassett Road. As to those paving poles, they can't get catch basin docks either. So we're scrambling to try to get materials for it. Unfortunately, there was two manufacturers in the state, United Concrete, Cromwell. United bought Cromwell, so now there's only one, so we're kind of at a mercy.
Nothing out of state, yeah?
Not, they're not authorized by the state, you know, the mature vendor list. So we didn't even go looking out of state. I've got no idea what the deal is, whether it's truly to the worker, always related or what. Just because we can't get the parts.
So is that just to send projects out two months?
The Georgetown, the pavement reclamation project is out two months. But they don't, they're doing clearing and grugging stuff removal. They're supposed to start other stuff tomorrow.
I see.
They're lucky, but they're struggling.
Did they ever change that light pole up there?
Pole, the trees are down, they put the pole in.
But they didn't switch the wires, so.
They, they have still a cable tunnel. Kind of a little bit of a streak going on right there. The engineer is saying they don't actually need to do that part to do the road work. Contractor says they want to do all at once, so. Part of the highway division, sweeping is finally done this week. Now we're gonna go back and clean up after the storm. Like I said, for the most part, they're going. We have a couple detention bases, which have failed in the last year, which we have to go back and fix. Some of the roads are in really, really poor condition. Big what, I'll talk about what happened with the road. Big what, oh hell, we got a fair number of calls on that. My problem with that is there's like six people that live on it. It's gonna cost almost half a million dollars to fix.
Where is this?
That's going toward Thomasin before Black Rock Center.
Oh, that, Big World Six, Thomasin Road.
Yeah, it's the old Route Six. It's a very long road, it's in very poor condition, and there are very few people living on it. So to get the payment for the bug, it simply isn't there. So we maybe hearing about that, we've had some angry calls. And then there's a couple of roads around town, and that's what seem to be the most touchy lately. And rightly so, it's a very back touchy. I just, I can't justify, you know, and I said in the budget presentation, you owe the eleven million dollar backlog, and a million dollars is the deal with it. I can't throw that kind of money in the road and benefit several people. It just doesn't settle. Solid waste, corrective action, stewardship permit. We finally have some action from the DEP. They reviewed our consultant's ecological report, they have some questions on it. And he said the fact that it's so. So we may actually have a resolution to the closure of the landfill up there this year, even though we have dumped it in nineteen eighty-two, we're still trying to close it. That doesn't mean that we're going to be monitoring it forever. Also, there's a place correction, the first one's canceled, the second one. We said all kinds of good records for attendance at Norada, in Waterbury. People were waiting in line almost two hours to dispose of the materials. So we're gonna have another one in September, and so we're gonna extend out the others. There was discussion about having the third one, but the region didn't vote for it, so.
That's the everything out there, the rushes and stuff.
Yeah, that's what I think. Contractor Jersey said that was fairly typical for all the events this year. They got, on average, about twice as much as they usually get, so. But they have improvements, not a lot going on there. It's supposed to have this story, I don't think, because you've been doing it for a while. Anything to talk about the transfer station? The intended recycling report, you have a copy of the annual report in your packet for your review and consideration. You have the questions, and we can get to that. We said, and the hurricane response, we talked to both of them about that. The annual was, this is more recycling report, gives you a snapshot as it comes through. Again, if you've been following the paper, Mirror is physically in trouble. Their request for the $330 million bounty from the state of Connecticut got rejected. So they're, again, they're threatening to increase our tipping fees from 145 hours per ton through the next few years from ninety-one dollars a ton. And that's of concern. We're also tracking very closely the cost up there at the transfer station. Again, because so many people, I think, were cleaning up basements and working a home and stuff like that. We're running seriously ahead of previous years in our monthly, weekly bills up there. So at the current rate, the bucked in line item is gonna be depleted before you enter this year. So, just stuff like, we'll keep you that on that one.
Will we talk about person rates, or?
We can talk about increasing rates, or we can talk about appropriation, or we just wait and see if it goes back to the normal. Whatever. Increasing rates is kind of a two-way sword. You know, it does increase revenue, but we start seeing more and more stuff on the side of Route Two. And the other thing is how many, given the unemployment levels, we're seeing increased usage here because USA hauling went up so much. If you take a look at the recycling report, there's only three people doing waste hauling in town these days. It used to be six or eight. And their USA hauling is very aggressively biting up on the companies. And if you're on the, if you're using them for waste, you're getting your garbage, you're seeing rates going up significantly. And I can only anticipate what's gonna happen when there are so not all here. So the rates is going up, so more people are using the transfer station again because they're suffering. So we're gonna give, we gotta walk that by line of generate revenue to town or side into the next year. So I did talk with Sue about that last week. And she said that revenues are exceeding income projection by a significant port, by a significant rate. So while we may wind up short on the line item on the revenue side, we may have enough to, that we do appropriate more money, may not hurt to put a line item up, general fund. Again, we gotta keep an eye on it, and we kind of expect in the next couple of months, you know, we're gonna figure out what regulations can be. So.
Yes.
But the whole mirror situation is a concern for financials. For the review, we do have a contract with Mirror through 2027. And we can get the most favorite length of mirror offers that. So that's taken offer is what we're gonna be doing for the next few years. And we do receive a rebate from, I think it's about fifty-seven per ton for anything comes into the transfer station on Echo Lake Road. And we're all receiving a recycling rebate from them. We used to get ten hours a ton, and it went down to five hours. And now it'll collapse in recycling when it gets zero. 2013 Public Works Farm, that's what Seth said, we're always gonna come out of after that. But after we know what the financial impact of that is, there's two of the colors we will replace depending on how much money is left over, and we'll close up that farm. 2019 Public Works Farm, there's a skate, there's a project list up there. We just plan to do a more paving later in the year once we get the drainage junk running. Moore Street, long repair is on schedule and on budget and proceeding. Bassett Road is proceeding. And we're hoping to get one or two more projects out of it this year. And then finish up after the next year. New business request for a bid waiver for Stony Brook. We already talked about that. Any more questions about item 7A? Typically, we have a motion on that to recommend and referral actions to the town council if you so choose.
Yeah, I would, um, do I make a motion?
On 7A? Make a motion as to the request for the bid waiver for Stony Brook construction for the Swift basketball court, and make a motion to accept it.
Rachel, what?
Make a motion to recommend referral to the town council?
Yes, yes, and that's you. That's the motion.
And Rachel's back on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was it favor?
Twenty twenty, Steve Grant, it's a, they're reactivating the Steve program, we died for a couple of years, they're doing something quick and dirty this year, they gave us less than a month to pull something together, and they're going to award it within a month. Traditionally, the Steve grant had been up to five hundred thousand dollars, which we have cats. This one is limited to one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars for some reason. They have a total of fifteen, they, the state, a total of fifteen million dollars to allocate to a particular program. Our proposed submission is for the next phase of the Main Street roadway safety audit program, the street components store, the person, the installation of two rectangular rapid flashing beacons on Main Street where the pedestrians fatalities occur. That was originally a part of last year's fiscal budget, which was allowed to last because we didn't get the plans expected from the contract, we got part two, which would be the signalization improvement at Woodorf and Main Street, which would do two things, the first would be installation of pedestrian safety there, handicap access ramp, and changing the signals to a pedestrian crossing. This will benefit the general public and also St. John's store there, and the installation of a new traffic signal ahead, primarily for the gas station convenience store located at the intersection, who's complained for years to the town, where they're saying it seems that their customers have problems safely getting in and out of the station due to confusion at the light. And then the third component would be installation of a new sidewalk from Woodorf down to the new Starbucks to complete that segment of the sidewalk network. All of these actions would more than meet the town's care, the Steve grant is a fifty-fifty grant, actually, they will authorize up to one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars, and you have to spend at least that amount to be eligible for one-on-one match-up to the amount. We are slightly greater net. The downside for all of this is that, if we are awarded the grant, they said we'll notify a signer about September fourteenth, we have to have town council approval and have the money in place within thirty days, which means we would have to have a town council approval and give you an amount of money which exceeds the referendum amount, we would have to have a town, a town public meeting to authorize us to spend the additional funds, even though we would get it as part of a grant, we still need a town meeting to authorize to spend the grant, but it's not part of the budget. So that will be the process, and that will have to occur very, very quickly.
So can, I just, I just want the numbers. So the grant amount is one hundred and twenty-eight thousand?
Yes.
And we have to match that?
And we said, yes.
Okay, so we would have to spend one hundred and twenty-eight thousand to get the one hundred and twenty-eight thousand?
We have to spend two hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Well, right, but we would be, so we need to come out, we need to approve the one hundred and twenty-eight thousand?
Or more.
Okay, right. Well, we'll come back to that, unreimbursed portion would be one hundred and twenty-eight thousand?
Yeah, yeah, at least.
And then, how much of that do we already have budgeted, though, that we were going to Spanish anyway, like, we had to, took our money, put aside for carbon?
We had money, we had thirty-five grand put away for the R R F Bs, we had a certain amount of money pulled away from all the room for the study for the next section, a portion which can be allocated to this, there is money, and. That was thirty-some thousand dollars, which, you know, we're looking to spend at least a portion of that for the next phase of the study. We do have money in the two thousand nineteen Public Works Farm for sidewalk portion of it, whatever else, so we have a good chunk of that, we can also reprogram, but at the end of the day, we're going to do additional general fund money, which will be requested to make up our share.
Right, but at the most, it'd probably be half of that, so that's not terrible. And we're going to get a ton of work done.
Yes. And now that I'm going to get a ton of work done, that the public was, well, you were at the.
Well, very important section.
It's a very important section, and it filled a very important need of the public to this year.
We could also do twice as much work, too.
Yes, discussed more than that, over the next four or five years, we can't put a price on public safety. And especially what I like about this, the Steve Grant regarding sidewalks going as part of Starbucks. We've never had a continuation of sidewalks from out north all the way down as far as, for example, Starbucks and on. The youths in town, students at Tech, for example, because of the church, the students stole from school across stations, I think this is one of the worst.
Well, they're always all up and down Main Street, so.
Yeah, Starbucks in the town was, is a kind of the only, otherwise. And it's also a lot, part of the Steve Grant application, and beside the fact, this is a logical extension of the previous Steve Grant we had for sidewalks, which added a fresh tree, and also is continuation of the significant amount of money that the Starbucks people invested in the signalization of the sidewalk in front of it. So, I mean, there's a lot of skin in the game, there's a lot of public support for this whole project, and this has been a longstanding goal for both merchants, as part of the RSA, and for police commission, as part of roadway safety, so. It's got a lot of, a lot of very good benefits to this.
Absolutely, especially if you can do a lot more, a lot of free money.
Can I ask a question? What would be the timeline for this, Roy?
My timeline is, if they do the grant, we would have, we have authorization from it by October. We spoke to the project manager for the grant program, and O P F, who's the grant administrator, and unlike the D O T, does not have a problem breaking this project into three mini projects and bidding them all out separately. Now, the R R F Bs, because they were already programmed in last year's budget, we have plans expected for them already in hand, and we've already submitted it to the D O T for a permit and a code group, so we could actually pick that out as soon as we get notice of the award. The sidewalk portion is, conceptually, has already been done by the engineering division, so we can clean that up, commit that to the D O T, and also get that out the bid as soon as we get the project award. So then, I would technically speaking, we can get all of that done this fall. The signalization portion of it would be the third component, we have a proposal from the willing room to do the engineering and permitting for them, that's got a much longer lead time, because we're, they are anticipating based on past experience that there would be, have to be at least two reviews by the D O T. We would submit a review comments, respond to their comments, resubmit, respond to their comments before we put up the bid, so basically, I don't see that portion happening before next spring under the best circumstances. So two-thirds could be done this year, one-third next year, and then by steep or government program, that's like, that's a light speed.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that sounds really fast. Wow, that's great.
It is fast, because we have so much in the can, and that's one of the things that I think we have an advantage over other towns, can consider favorably, because it is quote-unquote double ready, unlike most of the projects we hear that for.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to recommend submission of this, this would be one of the additions from the Steve sound?
Second.
I'll settle.
Paul, favor?
Aye.
Motion passes to you now.
Okay, the third is the request for modification of Ben Wayne or Coachella paving, and you may recall that, and there's a memo on this.
Did we do this, sir?
Pardon?
We didn't do this, sir?
Well, we did do this already, we gave them the Ben Wayne, but based on the two thousand and eighteen price difference, and we still can work at that time. The proposal at that time, and what we were doing down at Oldville, is there was a two-inch milled fill on the roadways. What we're doing now is, we're doing, some roads for this year is a two-inch milled fill, some roads have a three-inch milled fill, some of your roads we're taking all off, all four inches. So technically speaking, because the Ben Wayne road is only for the two-inch, we're requesting to keep things clean, so there's no dispute, is that we get, we modify the Ben Wayne to accommodate a three-inch milled fill and a four-inch milled fill. Well, Coachella is, told us that they're willing to modify their two-inch milling price by twenty-five cents per square yard per inch, which is really peanuts, but because those items were covered in a Ben Wayne, town attorney has advised us in modification of Ben Wayne, so technically, we're totally fine. So that's a purpose of that, is to increase by twenty-five cents per inch of milling filling, and modify the Ben Wayne. Again, would there be a motion?
So. Second.
Well, settle.
Paul, favor? Motion passes to you now. So you're gonna come with that for Monday, day twenty-four?
Yes. Last, not least, we're requesting a transfer for G I S, the tax incentives office, a, every year, well, tax incentives, as you know, basis their evaluation of property on the assessed, I mean, which is changed by building permits, we have lots, what happens is part of that process, the tax maps get changed. And traditionally, we've been hiring outside consultants, Ty and Vons do that, Ty and Vons doesn't, but every six months, if they need, they charge the town four thousand dollars to do so. We have an engineer, we've been developing an house capability for G I S, we have a trained and experienced technician now, so talking with the tax collector, we're proposing to transfer four thousand dollars that we would pay Ty and Vons to engineering, engineering would buy a new, or upgrade their capability, licensing G I S licensing, and the equipment, computer for this individual to do it. The engineering technician would be responsible, if this happens, for updating the tax maps as they come in, or modifications as they come in, as opposed to waiting every six months. So the tax incentives will get more accurate and more timely response to a tax map or something, and we wouldn't have to pay an outside consultant.
So we want to move four grand from outside services to in-house?
To in-house services, in essence.
I make a motion to do that.
I'll settle.
Paul, favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes to me on this. You have all that ready for?
Yes.
Anything else?
Let's, I'm gonna go to the chairman, let's see, the chair, was she there? The other chair, not, was she there?
Rachel, do you have anything?
Questions, comments, concerns?
Can't hear you.
Oh, can you hear me? I just had a question. Somebody brought to my attention that they were, the spaces were numbered, and then they were painted over. I, I wasn't there to see it, I don't know. Is that?
Where?
In the parking lot.
Yes.
Okay, I was just wondering what, what happened, or why they were numbered, or painted over, or not.
Okay, originally, all of the parking spaces were going to be numbered, and a certain number of them were being designated for staff members, senior staff. I forgot one. So, there was a number assigned of parking spaces inside the back of the side of the building, in addition to that, there was a number of spaces which were going to be reserved. Part of building code, there is a certain number of handicap parking spaces which are required, and they, those were installed in accordance with the plan. So, one of the items of concern that came up was the maximizing the number of parking spaces for the public, for that end, staff was directed to park down below, and town cars were directed to park down below, further away from the building. So, a certain number of stalls were designated for various town positions, and there were some undesignated spaces which were quote-unquote for reserve. Now, two of the reserved spots were allocated by the town manager. Sorry?
I didn't say anything.
Two, two of the spots were reserved by the town manager for elderly staff members due to their, their age and condition. In addition, we are aware there, there's going to be at least two other staff members which are going to be on the extended handicap parking status, due to upcoming operations that they're going to have on knee and on their, on their bodies respectively. Now, these people are going to have to require unencumbered access to the building via the handicap ramp and elevator use for at least several months, so that would indicate there'd be four people who would be required, or at least two people require a handicap parking, and two other people's physical condition generally preclude that from using stairs to the best advantage possible. So it was felt that we did not want to have staff members on a daily basis tying up the handicap parking spaces. So, there was a number of reserve spots put up, and they're still up. Now, the, the parking spaces in that building were numbered and assigned, and the, and some of the parking spaces on the side of the building were numbered and assigned, or left in reserve, and the feeling on the part of, there was a decision or directive made that the parking on the side of the building should not be numbered or assigned on a specific basis, and the staff was directed to remove those numbers, which was accomplished. And there's still a couple of reserve spots there for use. The feeling in house was that the town manager should have some discretion in the assignment of staff parking, and as a result of the removal, the assignment of staff parking and reserved parking has been reduced, with the objective of maximizing the amount of state available for the public to park there.
Okay, that makes sense.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's really helpful to have all that, that background information. So are there any assigned spaces?
Yes, there's, I want to say nine, but there may be, and two reserve spots in the back of the building, and there's two reserve spots on the side of the building. The ones in the back of the building are for investors, department heads, and town manager, that sort of thing, with two compact. One of the considerations was that, given these sightlines and the very constructed travel lanes in back of the building, it was one way only, and all of the signage hasn't been installed by the contractor yet, they really, in planning and zoning, weighed in on this during the approval process, really don't want the public driving in back of the building, and certainly don't want the public parking in back of the building. And one of the other reasons to be is public access to the building is only through the two designated spots, going down below, one up by the border there. For security reasons and coordination reasons, all of the other entrances in the building are locked and not available for the public. and not available for the public. So the thought was to keep the front parking lot, lower parking lot available for the public. I don't know what the border bed is going to be doing. In short, we are going to be switching over in-house security system for the building from a key system to a key card system. So in fact, only access the public will have is through border bed entrance and the main entrance down by parking rack. For a little more clarification.
Okay, that's great, that's so helpful. Thanks so much, Roy.
Thank you.
Chair.
Absolutely.
I say, I think Mr. Campbell explained that very well about reserved parking for employees that may have a handicap temporarily, to encourage them to still be gainfully employed, to work, to feel worthy of working, and to reserve the handicap spots for the handicap accessible for the public to come as needed to the building. It was done very well.
And that was it. Look, we, our work, as you know, our work in the car company encourages us to put people on like the way in the as soon as possible. Because we only have a lot of people, so.
Also, there'd be sure the parking issue, I know, came up as a potential issue. And for security purposes, I would say, not only for security, but to discourage the general public just to drive in wherever they want, around behind the building, could only create a security risk for the employees to try to go.
Yeah, I'd gladly rub security, if I can go off topic for a second. Part of the report that I've been directed to give to the town council at the next meeting with Rara Hemingway, there has been extensive meetings in regard to security issues in the building, in regard to Rad Fest, in regard to COVID, and some concerns were expressed by staff members and members of the public, and we brought in consultants to take a look at some issues that we're going to be talking to the town council about. I don't necessarily want to go out of public record about what the security deficiencies may or may not be, or what we're going to be doing to address them. But I, you know, do want to give you a heads up, the fact that we are going to be talking to the town council about identifying potential physical and electronic security issues that the town council may want to address here relatively quickly.
Everybody good?
Yep.
Then I realize for a motion to adjourn.
Certainly, I will.
All in favor?
All in favor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
You, too.
So, you know, a lot of the public.